All right, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started for our meeting Tuesday, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll go ahead and get started. Are there any additions or deletions? No?
No.
All right, so we're gonna start with some board recognition.
Yes, I'll ask Mr. Wainwright to come forward and do some introductions here. Can you introduce him?
If you could say a little bit, Kelly.
Huh?
Say a little bit about however your order is, Kelly. It's your show.
Okay. You know, we had a really good fall. These two groups here highlight kind of what we were able to accomplish in terms of having some groups go to state and an individual. I'll point out a couple other things real quick. Volleyball team, twenty-eight wins, third highest total ever, first sexual since two thousand and six. Kind of a really cool, excellent deal for them. Coach Hunter got her hundredth win. When I started, I think we went through three coaches in three years. I thought we were gonna get to maybe ten wins, coach. Girls cross-country was sexual champs. Girls golf team qualified for regional. And I'm gonna come back to that one real quick in just a second. Girls soccer had a good season. We had a first-team All-State. Grace Mann was named first-team All-State, which just doesn't happen, which is an incredible honor for her. I do wanna point out one of our golfers, Ellie Gatton. Ellie Gatton this year was our number-one golfer. She was at the regional, and this is a show of her character. Went to turn-in scores. The other girl who was keeping her score had a wrong score. She had given her a shot less. Ellie corrected it, missed out going to state by one shot. She could very easily have not said a word. Nobody would've known, and she would've been a state qualifier. But character stood out for Ellie Gatton, and I just, I think the world of that decision on her part. Total, we had about two-hundred-and-fifty kids involved this fall. So that's awesome, throughout nine programs. Love to see that, love to see some more kids continue to be involved in things that we do. I know on your list you have cross-country first, but we have to let our ladies go. This year, they've competed in two-state contests, so I'm gonna bring up Coach Clifton and let her talk about them.
All right, good evening. So, I am here today to share the incredible accomplishments of our high school cheerleading program, and I brought my whole crew with me. You know, to celebrate their dedication, the resilience that they've shown this season, and just the spirit of these student athletes. So this season, our cheerleaders worked tirelessly to perfect their game day and timeout cheer routines. Their energy, precision, and school spirit were on full display, and they represented our school with lots of pride. Through injury, and then some more injuries, we had to make changes week after week, and that's really hard in our sport because people are in specific spots for specific reasons. So, that is definitely hard, but you know, they come out here, and week after week, we have people coming to us and telling us how much they love seeing our girls on the track, on the mat, and on the floor as well. So I'm really proud of that. It's kind of confusing as to why we have two-state competitions. That doesn't happen in any other sport. But with different routines, you have different kind of divisions and state competitions. So, that's kind of, we went to a game-day competition, we went to a timeout competition, and those are two different types of state. There's also a traditional routine that you could do. We don't compete in traditional routines. So we started out at the Hoosier Cheer Coaches Association, and that was where we competed our game-day routine. During that routine, we show, we start with a band dance, then we move into what, like a situational chant. So on the spot, the girls have to be able to do defense or offense. So they have to have both of those ready. And then we kind of move into our regular cheer that we would do on the floor, and then you finish with our school song. So, that one is super-high energy and really a lot of fun. So that was our first time ever doing that type of routine. And out of nineteen schools, we placed in the top ten. And that was so exciting, just because we'd never done that before. So out of nineteen, we placed ninth, so I was really, really proud of that. And then, you know, we had some small deduction that made a big impact on that weekend, where we could've placed a lot higher. But things happened, and it's no different than missing a layup or, you know, missing that touchdown pass. So, things happened, but we moved forward, and we made it to state for our timeout routine as well. And we ended up placing third, which is so exciting because we've never placed that high at all. So when they announced top-three, you trophy top-three, and so we were super-excited just to hear our name amongst the thirteen schools that were trying for that state final. So, not only like is our competition team doing so well, but they're also thriving and improving every single year, and that's, I couldn't ask for anything better. So, they work so, so hard. Not only that, but we also have quite a few of our All-American cheerleaders with us, and that's something that they receive in the summer. So, very soon, they will be headed down to Disney World, where they will go through some extensive practicing, and they get to do some major performances in front of the masses at the happiest place on earth. So, that's really exciting for them. And those All-American cheerleaders are Addison Privet, Bella Roy, Tenley Morris, Isla Moses, Gabby Gill, Avery Kirin, Addison Remke, Emmeline Johnson, and Macy Richmond. So of all of those All-Americans, five of them will be going to Disney World, and that will be Addison, Emmeline, Macy, Tenley, and Gabby. So, as we like come here and kind of celebrate our achievements this season, I just wanna thank like the community and just say that we are so proud of the support that we receive, and I'm so proud of these girls and all that they accomplished on the floor and on the mat. The competition team members include freshman Matty Ringer, Presley Jones, Kate Trout, Kenley Reed, Nova Malone, Sienna Favery, and Krista Gerber. Sophomores are Addison Privet, Bella Roy, Tenley Morris, and Lilly Holmes. Juniors are Ryland Bouvier, Isla Moses, Ella Hinton, Gabby Gill, Kylie Huffer, and Avery Kirin. And seniors are Sawyer Peterson, Abby Gerber, Macy Richmond, Emmeline Johnson, Addison Remke, and Carly Foss. So I just wanna thank you again for giving us your time this evening. Okay.
Thank you. Good job, girl. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow that up. Yeah, not gonna happen. I'm Cody Haney. I'm the head cross-country coach for Norwell, and I'm here to recognize Kayden Petrie. So this was the first time since two thousand and two that we, as a school, sent a boy or a team to the state competition. It was a goal for us, starting really last year. We thought that we had a chance to send a team, which seemed a little crazy since we were losing eight seniors out of a squad of eighteen. So we were almost losing half our team. But looking at what we were returning and the talent that we had with guys just coming back and incoming freshmen, we thought we had a good shot. And we actually fell short by two spots as a team. But when you're going up against Homestead and Carroll and these larger schools that just have thousands of kids, you know, it's difficult to do that. What I think is most impressive is, last year was Kayden's first year even running cross-country, which just shows the immense hard work that he put in. From, and he even didn't even start competing until halfway through last season. So he came on board late, you know, got his practices in and jumped, you know, jumped in headfirst and saw what it took to, you know, just compete, you know, at all, let alone at a high level. And, you know, once the season was over, just constantly was asking, what more could he do? What am I missing? And it was an incredible, incredible opportunity to just see all the hard work over the last, you know, fourteen months really, finally pay off and be able to compete against, you know, everybody at the state level and finish, and, you know, just outside of the top two-hundred. And it, you know, a lot of people that don't know much about cross-country, it's like, that doesn't seem that impressive. But you have to understand that that's out of everybody that runs cross-country. Everybody gets an opportunity, you know, kinda like in the NCAA tournament, I guess. Everybody gets a chance to make it down there. And, you know, despite all odds against going against some of the strongest competition in the area, Kayden was able to make it through and have a presence down there. And thankfully, we were able to take, you know, the varsity team down there and a couple returners down to the state meet and see what our goal is and have a tangible idea of what it's gonna take to be down there and see, you know, what it looks like as a team to compete at that level. So, I couldn't be more proud of Kayden and the hard work that he's done and the leadership that he's shown to the other guys that are following in his footsteps. And yeah, it's just been, it's been a good journey to be a part of, so, thank you.
Oh gosh, I was up to fifty miles a week, so fifty miles a week times however many weeks in summer.
He's gonna, I would say he's gonna average, yeah, I would say he's gonna have over two-thousand miles by the end of this calendar year, so it's a lot.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, so it was a great year for the marching band as well. We were really excited to see a lot of growth, number-wise as well as ability-wise. The marching band was right around fifty members this year, which was an increase of about like fifteen or twenty from last season. So, we're seeing some really exciting growth and a lot of competitive success because of that as well. And a lot of that is thanks to this group behind me. This is my group of seniors this year. We're missing a few of them, but we have ten seniors in the marching band. So, even though like we had a lot of growth, we're losing a lot next year, so our work's not done. We're still rebuilding. But we had a lot of competitive success in all of our invitationals we attended. We placed in the, at least in the top three with also several first-place finishes, including different caption awards. So how that works for marching band is there's a three different captions. There's the music, the visual, and the general effect. So we earned some of those captions awards in each invitational. At our prelims competition at Homestead, we got a distinction award in visual, I believe it was. And, but we have some friendly competition in our class, which is bluffed in. So we were kinda competing with them back and forth all season. We had beaten them all season long, and then they barely edged us out at prelims and just barely beat us, and they were very happy about that. But thankfully, we came back at finals and meet them. With no problem at all. So, yeah, it's been an excellent season, and we're really excited about the growth that we're seeing. I think four years ago, we, like you all know, like we were kind of in a rough place and had a lot of rebuilding to do, and we know that our work's not over. But a lot of the work that's been done has been done by this group. A lot of them have even been in the marching band for five or six years, so they've seen the highs and lows and we're really excited about what's to come. And so we wanna thank all the school board and administration. I also wanna thank Kelly, if he's, I don't think he's here anymore. But he was a huge help in the summer because there were delays with the parking lot repaving, so we got to use the turf a lot this summer. That was really nice. And huge thanks to transportation as well for making sure we make it down the road to our competition. So, we couldn't have done it without the awesome community at Norwell.
Who is the people that were bringing out your props? Are those the parents?
Those are parents, yeah. They're volunteers. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I've thanked the parents many, many times. They know how important they are to me. The prop parents, the equipment parents that move out the instruments. We have a parent that drives our semi, who, you know, is certified, and parents that help with uniforms and feeding the students. Like, it really does take a village, you know, and the parents and administrators and everyone just all on board has made my job easier. And when people congratulate me, I just say, like, I just stand there and yell at them, and they're the ones that are working hard, right? So, yeah. They, yeah, it is a well-oiled machine, and they get it off the field really quick, too, which is important because there are penalties if you don't get off fast enough, and they know that, and they're moving fast, so, yeah. That's, I'll have it, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just wanna take a moment here. She at our last board meeting had just spoke and talked about the difficulty in accessing some of the stuff on. I know.
Oh, I thought you said she was.
You heard, no. So she had just mentioned how sometimes it's difficult to access things or get the reports and do whatever. And we appreciate that, appreciate also the way that you expressed that, you know, and asked for that. And so we wanted to, so we have a meeting then following, and Byron's up here at the top, we wanna try to address that, even though, and I have some other examples. I don't know if I'm gonna go to it, but of other districts, too. So I think sometimes if Mrs. Duncan didn't do it this way, but sometimes when we talk about something that maybe we'd like to have better here, it almost comes across like, like we're not doing it at all, or like we're not transparent or we're not doing things well. Our people worked really hard at this, and that's what I appreciated, how you asked or suggested that because you weren't saying that at all. And I think if you look at some other districts, like it's hard to organize everything on a website. But we recognize that there's things that, especially like our menu, we're not done with this. There's a lot there, and we think there's a better way to do that and organize all that. But one thing that we did, based on Mrs. Duncan's comments of the last meeting, was created this, these tabs here. And so, like for example, this was the third-quarter financial report that we did, and we're gonna leave that up for a while because that was the last big kind of report that we had. We didn't have any, like this is the super tense report for this meeting, and we don't have a hearing or anything like that or any presentations. If we did, we're gonna put that there. So for the upcoming board meeting, you'll see the presentation that's going to be coming up that you can reference. And then also just a link here, so if you click on this, it takes you right to the meetings link. And so you can go to that day's board meeting, or you can go to previous meetings, recent meetings here. So if you click on more, here, you can get to all the other meetings and look those things up. So, just trying to add something there. It's never going to be, you know, hand-delivered for people, just no way to do it that way. But we do wanna try to make it as easy to access as possible, so you don't have to go through several steps. You go to the menu, then this, then that. If you can, we can do it in a way that it's here, and we're open to suggestions if there's even a more user-friendly way of creating this. How many of these tabs can we add there? Is it just three?
No, you can have a couple rows of them.
You can have a couple rows. And so as you scroll down, I mean, there's different, you know, we're trying to highlight things like our newsletter and, you know, different things like that that make it easy for people to access. But we're gonna continue to do a deep dive into the menu, and if there's a better way to group things in the menu that just is a quicker, like click and grab, we wanna do that. And I want to share also, Byron has something else that...
So, in the new diligent community thing, you can now do a live stream with the agenda on the side. So, but then that has to be through YouTube, the stream, and not Facebook. So right now, I'm streaming Facebook and YouTube. But what we may go to is just posting a link on Facebook to this stream here, so you have both of them together, and then you have the links all tied together. So a little more convenient for somebody if you click on it and then you don't have to go find the agenda. Also, it's all tied together, and you can see it as your live stream.
And will that also, would they have to click on, like if there's a presentation link there, will they have to click on that, or will that show up?
No, you'd have to click on the link. All those items in there are linkable, so when you click on them, it takes you straight there. So just some little things like that to try to make it a few less clicks to get it everywhere. Not, everything could be on the homepage, obviously, because then it becomes a different type of chaos.
Too much, yeah.
Yeah.
So the Facebook link will be on YouTube, like you're saying on Facebook?
So like whenever, what I was thinking was, is like, as we go live tonight, I put a post out that says if you wanna watch the, if you wanna watch the board meeting, and then there's a link that takes you to YouTube, well, it's not even to YouTube, really. It takes you to the diligent, which is the board doc stuff. A link there that has the YouTube video embedded in it. Does that make sense?
On Facebook, can they still watch it live through clicking on that link?
If they click on the link, you'll watch it live, yes. It just won't be streamed through Facebook. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because and the reason for that diligent community is doesn't use Facebook, they use YouTube.
Correct.
I like the new look.
So I appreciate that, and just, I mean, always, because we're willing to try to make this better, and we don't necessarily know if it's not user-friendly, if the users will tell us it's not. So we appreciate that. Okay, thanks.
It's amazing how far we've come in my seven years.
Okay, moving on to approval of consent agenda items.
Yeah, so you do have, you have the previous minutes in there, both the regular meeting and then in your board packet, because obviously the executive session minutes are confidential. So that's in your confidential packet, and then...
Claims.
Yeah, then you have claims in there also, yeah.
Ready to get a motion to approve?
Yep, and make motion to approve.
All in favor, right hand, opposed, same side, okay. All right, moving on to discussion items.
Okay, so for discussion items, so now it was Cory Benoiz. Kathy and Tracy are part of, they're the board representatives for the board policies. And so we have our ISBA quarterly meetings where Julie Slavens, the ISBA attorney, will share policies that she either is recommending or that are required. And so, so four of the, or three of the four that we have listed here are actually discretionary, but they have been recommended by ISBA, and that's the employee reference checks, homebound instruction, and debt collection, and it actually should say debt collection and forgiveness. And so, so those were all discretionary but recommended by ISBA. Homebound, or habitual truant was one that's actually required. And so it's just defining, they recently defined what habitual truant, like what that actually, what qualifies as habitual truant. And so, so we can just go through these, I guess, and talk through these one by one, and we can talk as much as you want. I'll go ahead and click here so everybody can see. I think I'll click here.
I mean, I guess I'll ask, does anybody have any thing to say about the employee reference checks policy?
The reason for it is it's just kind of spelling out more in-depth as to what...
Yeah, so it's, these are things that we do anyway, but it's just having a board policy saying that you need, you have to do this, like you, we're not allowed to bring a recommendation if we haven't done this. No, it's, that's practice, and we do it, but this is saying you have to. The one thing I guess I'd like you guys to see, and I apologize, I don't know why this isn't, I don't know, Byron, if that's something I'm doing wrong, why that link isn't, help me out for me there. But if you go down one, two, three, four, five, the fifth paragraph, so it says priority reference check for the applicant is to be asked to sign a release granting the corporation permission to contact any person listed as a reference. And then it says, as well as any other person who may be familiar with the applicant's previous job, performance, or suitability for employment. Like, I like having, like, doing that, but when I read that, and I talked a little bit more about that, there are rare occasions where somebody has applied for a position but isn't ready for their employer to know that they've applied yet, that it's kind of a confidential situation. So that's the only, that's the only piece. I don't know how you feel about that. I mean, prior to us bringing a recommendation, I feel like that needs to be, that's no longer confidential. Like, if we're getting to the point that we feel like that's the best candidate, then we need to make sure we contact previous employers first. But I don't know if it should stop the application process if they're not in that stage of letting their former or their current employer know. So I don't know how you feel about that piece of it.
I mean, should we be reaching out to anybody that's, other than who they've listed us to reach out to? I mean, we should be?
I mean, I think that's not uncommon practice, just to, just to reach out and talk with others that maybe they haven't listed as, maybe they're not listing who we actually need to talk to.
When it gets to the point where it's a recommendation for hire, not to you necessarily, but from Kelly, or whatever, at that point, has the candidate let their current job know?
Right, and that's where I think maybe as we're talking here, maybe that's how the wording could be.
Yeah.
Prior to board recommendation.
Yeah, because you do wanna know, but I, as an employee, I don't want, you know, I don't want you to give, because if we don't say yes or you say no to the recommendation, then that's what no.
So I mean, that was a situation with Anna. So she, just at that point, she wasn't ready, right, in case it didn't move forward. And I would've hated, obviously, to have lost Anna as a candidate at that time for that reason. And so, yeah, so that's where I think that can be reworded. Reworded. If you guys are good with that, I can bring it back into rewording.
Yeah.
To say so prior to...
Yeah, prior to board recommendation, but it doesn't stop the application process.
Right.
Habitual truant, so again, so part B, like that's just the, well, I guess, A and B. I mean, those are just definitions, so there really isn't a whole lot of discussion in that. That's what it is. And again, this is a required policy. But the, so D, where it says the student's principal, that it has in brackets there, is required to or may report to the Indiana Bureau of Motor Vehicles of the student status as an habitual truant. So, talk about that.
My opinion is we should just strike D because I think that's government overreach, and I don't wanna be involved. I don't want any of our staff to have to be involved. So, that would be my opinion, that we get rid of D altogether and let the Bureau of Motor Vehicles decide.
Wait, so we are allowed to eliminate?
Well, I think because it says required, and I'll double-check on that, but I'm pretty sure because it says is required to or may, the fact that it says may tells me we're not required to do it. Because if that weren't the case, then they would just tell us, you have to do it. So the main thing is, we just have to have a board policy on how we're defined, or on habitual truancy. They're defining it for us, but we have to have a policy for it. So, yeah, I think D can be struck out. I will double-check with Nick on that to make sure you don't know that it has to be in there, do you?
I don't know.
Yes.
So I think what Cory's saying, too, like say it has to be in there, but we can change the verbiage stating that...
We could, yeah.
Like, there's no requirement by Norwell?
Yeah, we would choose may. At the very minimum, you would, or maybe maximum, whatever. You would only wanna have may, you definitely would not wanna have the is required to.
Yeah, I think we could, maybe what, to bring back what you're on saying is maybe we could make it even more. I don't want them to do that.
Got you, yeah.
However, if we don't have the thought, like, the ability to remove letter D completely from the policy that's required.
Make sure it has may and then we can have in our, in our, um, guidelines, you know, eternal may, that we're not gonna do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you should keep D, but I would put it as may, that's my first.
I, I don't want to keep D, so I would rather ask Nick if we can get rid of it and then we can add that discussion.
Yeah, so what I can, yeah, what I'll do is see if we have the, um, ability to do that, and then we'll have two options for the board at the next meeting.
Why would you wanna keep D?
I think again, it's just a tool you could use.
But what authority do you have to take a kid's ability to get a license away if they don't come to school?
I think, I think tardiness is, is a rampant issue and I think any way we can help them ensure they come to school, I think it's important. And the school has that ability to, whatever motivates them to be here. Cause I, I think in the work world, we find that a lot of people don't show up. It's, it's a problem.
But then they get fired and they have, they have a real world, you know, issue. This is, to me, that this, this comes down to freedom and, and I don't, I want nothing to do with telling a kid he can't get his license just cause he doesn't come to school. I, I'm all about wanting them to be here, but if we tell a kid he doesn't come to school because he's not coming for whatever reason, whatever the unexcused absence is, I think that's a very dangerous game to play.
I think that's overstepping as government and I think it's overstepping parents' boundaries too. I mean, ultimately, it's my decision whether my child gets their license or not and whether they're allowed to drive.
Yeah.
As long as they have done A, B, and C, but I don't think where the school comes into play, I, I don't think we come into play there.
And I would tell you, the reason it's there is because again, and I'm not, I'll be honest with you, um, so I was a, like you guys know, I was a middle school principal. An elementary principal, I didn't really ever have to deal with this, part of it when I dealt with attendance with kids. Um, obviously, as a superintendent, you know, um, I would have principals that were dealing with it. Um, but this has been a pretty common practice and, you know, your experience has been, I mean, it's a pretty common practice.
I, and the, the odds of it happening are so extremely low, but I, I don't think we should have anything to do with it, so. Obviously, it's the first reading, I just wanna understand, so.
Yeah.
I just believe it's something we can correct, if we can help correct it.
Then the other one is F, uh, where you have a choice, it says a student, uh, who has been designated as a habitual truant. And it says will not or will be allowed to participate or continue to participate in extracurricular activities or co-curricular activities. So, what are your thoughts on that? If, if it is, if they're designated habitual truant, should it be board policy that they cannot participate in extracurricular?
I mean, that's kind of already covered in our, in our ECA policies.
That they wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah. I, to me, I, so, yeah.
But I think making it board policy would be then that, um, like, we would have to change a board policy before we would take that out of the, like, our ECA guidelines.
I, to me, I, I think we could get rid of F as well and we can just go off of the ECA guidelines or.
And just keeping in mind that, like, that, I mean, you saw the approval of guidelines, but those guidelines could be.
Adjusted, yeah.
Could be adjusted then to not include that as a board if you're saying, listen, if we have kids that are officially truant, we don't want them to be allowed them to participate in extracurricular. Like, you would, you don't have to put that in board policy, but you could strengthen it to say that will be in handbooks or that will be in ECA code of conduct.
Yeah, I, I think F could just say something more, yeah, just reference whatever it is. And then if, if the handbook, in my opinion, gets changed, then we would have to change the policy like you said, but.
But to be clear, like, you guys don't think they should be participating or you don't have a strong opinion?
Oh, I don't, I don't think they should be participating, but I don't, I don't think we need to have it in here. And I guess when it says designated as a habitual truant, does that mean, like, you get the moniker and then you have six months to prove that you aren't?
Yeah, so when do you not become habitual? When does that?
Well, I think it's a question, like, when do you not?
So, it says, right, so it says here, um, oh, you know what? We did, cause we had skipped over this, which provides to any person who is determined to be habitual truant as defined by the school board and cannot be issued an operator's, operator's learned license or learner's permit until the age of eighteen. Or until the student's attendance has approved, as determined by the, yeah, we had skipped over that because we were so focused on the, on the days.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually in there.
So, I.
So.
Yeah, so I think if that's Indiana law, then, then that's a different discussion. I don't think it should be law, but.
Yeah, and I apologize for that, guys, I had skipped over, cause I looked at the numbers.
How that works. I can't figure out.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, I know, I mean, it's been practiced for a long time and so.
I guess I would ask Nick then, because it is law, we have to follow, we have to follow that or that it, we recognize that it's law, but do we have to report it?
Right, yeah, that's, and that's where D comes in too. Are we requiring the principal to do it or is it a may report and, you know, it's the responsibility of, you know, but, um. So, the one, just to answer your question of until when, so it says until the age of eighteen or until the student's attendance record has approved, uh, has improved as determined by the principal upon review of the student's record at least once per school year.
So, once they're determined as a habitual truant, that sticks with them until their next school year?
Well, at least once. I mean, we could change it to say, you know, after thirty days of getting that name, but.
But is this Indiana law?
It is.
For the one year?
Yeah.
Yeah, you might.
So, we'll bring, we'll bring Nick back. I mean, I had interesting apprehension with this, but, um, and I'm sorry, I should have asked Nick to be here for this discussion. I was anticipating, um, that being a tripping point for you guys, so.
Well, and I, I think it's good for everybody, not just us, to understand, like, we can all agree that, or most of us agree that we don't like it, but we don't really have.
It might not be in our control.
Yeah, so it's, I think it's good discussions to have and if you hear that you don't like this, then you gotta call down to your representatives, but. Yeah, I think, I think we need to look at this with Nick a little more, cause to me, that giving them that designated habitual truant moniker would screw them up ECA-wise, even if they had improved their attendance. So, we, we probably need to figure out what we can adjust in B.
See, I like D if you just put may instead of required.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of what I.
Yeah, and, and then that's, that's where I guess I need to have some clarification too, that if it's, you know, subject to Indiana law, which provides that any person who is determined to be a habitual truant, as defined by the school board policy, cannot be issued an operator's license or learner's permit until age eighteen. You know, if that's the case, then you have to, you seem like you would have to report, but anyway.
That's crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's good to discuss it, right? We'll bring you back and we'll be more prepared on our end to.
Just can't even know when our kids are getting their licenses.
What's that?
I mean, like, do our principals even know when the kids are going to get their license set even?
Right, no.
I, I just, to me, it's.
No, and that's why I'd be like, you just notify the, you know, Indiana Bureau of Motor Vehicles.
Right, yeah.
This is probably a SRO thing, right? Like, were they're heavily involved, right? So, I guess, how, how often are we doing this? Do we know?
Well, I don't, Kim's not here to, to ask him, but, um, I mean, you can talk, your, your experience as a principal.
Yep, so with that, um, what we have currently right now, I'm wondering if this thing's more. So, what we have now is we have a person that's keeping track of the attendance. So, when they keep track of the attendance, we start looking at having meetings after, before this is, if anyone ever becomes officially truant. So, it happens after the five days and we work with Wells County, um, the SROs are a person, um, that does that. Uh, Mr. Feldhizer works with both schools to make sure that this is where we are. And when it comes down to being labeled officially truant, I don't think that that's, uh, that's not a lot. That's not a lot of students, that's not hardly any, so let me just throw it out there. Because generally, after you have that meeting, after the five days, before you get to the officially truant after ten days, then right away, you're, you're stopped. So, probation gets involved with just a conversation and that's generally enough for everyone to go, nope, I don't think so. And so, we look at all the barriers then that's, that's not allowing the students to, you know, make it to school. And, and I'm gonna say ninety-nine times out of a hundred, if not a hundred out of a hundred, the, the students make it here. Yeah, and if it's, you know, for medical reasons or something like that, then we work with the student.
Thank you.
I would imagine this has never been invoked, for us at least, but.
In your previous employment, you would have contacted the Indiana Bureau of Motor Vehicles.
Absolutely, and I did. I contacted the bureau and I would say, um, student A is not coming to school. However, I'm seeing them at, after school things and they're coming, so that was just something I put in as teeth to get them to come to school. Um, because before this, this was enacted, there really wasn't a whole lot and I needed them here at school. So, if I could contact the Bureau of Motor Vehicles to say, hey, work with me, they did, and I did that, just to get them here. So, I wanted them with me.
Let me get discussion when we come back.
Yeah.
In the next meeting, so. I just wanted to make sure that Nick's here and that.
Mr. Feldhizer?
Yeah.
I mean, he's the one.
Alright, the next one is homebound instruction. So, just to be clear on this and it's in, so there's, there's three examples. So, I wanted to give the board all three examples and you can, you know, kind of read through them and see which one you like the best. I'll tell you the one I think we should do, uh, but again, ultimately, it's your policy. Um, but you'll see at the bottom of each one, it says students with disabilities, um, will be provided homebound instruction according to the student's individual education program and/or the case conference committee determination. So, this is not about that, like, that, oh, is always, this is more for other things. So, a student, um, is out because of a severe illness or, you know, an accident or, you know, something that's a medical issue that's happened, health issue that's preventing them from, from coming to school and, you know, we wanna, we wanna have, basically, it's just recommended to have a board, board policy that guides schools on whether or not we're gonna provide homebound instruction. So, you can, you can read through each of those, you know, one says will consider, one says, you know, will provide. Honestly, I like the, I think the third one to me is written the best. And it says, the school board may provide pursuant to rules of state board of education, individual instruction to students who are not able to attend classes because of an illness or temporary disability. And then it has doc- documentation categories for all that. And then it says teachers providing the homebound instruction, and I don't know, let's do that. Uh, shawl fold and Indiana teaching certificate appropriate for the grade of the student for which the assignment is made. And I think that's important, um, you know, to have a board policy on that, that if we're saying we're gonna do homebound instruction, we wanna make sure that the person providing it is qualified to provide it. Uh, so I think that, that's important, but personally, I just think example three is, is the cleanest written one. I think the may provide is important, cause it doesn't, you know, paint us into a corner. Uh, but it's also encouraging that, that, you know, under these circumstances, that we should try to do that.
The, I agree, I think three is the best one. The only thing that I think three is missing that maybe we want to add in, in, like, in example two, it talks about, um, uh, the parents or guardians of, like, I don't see anything in three of parents being involved.
Yeah, good point.
So, just to add something to that.
Does everybody else agree with that? Okay, you ready to go on to the next one? Alright, next one's collection of forgiveness of debt. And again, it's just, it's just discretionary but recommended in, in, like I said, Lyndon, who's our treasurer, Lynda Linwell, we talked about this and she agrees because right now we have some, um, some debt that, you know, student debt that they haven't paid and we're, you know, talking massive amounts, but they're just sitting in our books and we really don't have a board policy for forgiving that. And it mentions in there about, um, so if you go down to the third paragraph, every decision to forgive, waive, or write off debt must be documented. Uh, and include the specific facts of the decision relating to one of the above stated reasons. Then it says if there is a student lunch account, it cannot be an expense to the school food service account and must be covered by a non-federal, by non-federal funds. We already have a board policy, it's policy sixty-four twenty-one R for procedures for student lunch accounts and it says it in that too. So, we wouldn't do it for, we won't cover it through food service, but right now we get donations that you approve every now and then to help families out that are in that situation already, so, um, but I think this is important, um, to have this. We, we have a good collection process in place. Excuse me, but there may be circumstances and they, and they list those, you know, that's, that the student parent guardian is unable to pay the debt. The debt could impact the health or safety of the student. The cost to pursue or collect the debt for the student parents will cost more than the debt itself, you know. There's things in there and again, we can discuss whether you like those or not, but we need to have a board policy on whether or not we're going to forgive debt and get it off the books, cause right now we don't have that. And we don't have a ton of it, right, but we have some.
Are we allowed to set a limit of debt that we are willing to forgive?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know that there's any reason why you can't do that.
The, the, I, along that line, I was thinking, and, and we may have it in a policy, but it, you know, if a construction company has a hundred grand or something like that, you know, I think setting a limit may fix that, unless there's policy somewhere.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be more into contracts that you have with those groups. But, so this one here, this policy is just owed by patrons, parent, or employees, parents and students. Not necessarily, so, so places like, for example, Y-Dan right or whatever, like, we have a contract with them, so that's a little bit different. Or, or some other, you know, contracted service, things like that, so.
I, maybe we could do, uh, cause what's the minimum, if it goes over ten grand, like, something we wanna purchase, we have to have that on that budget sheet. Maybe we could just put ten grand on it, like a, you know, with, I don't know.
Yeah, I can, I can look at it.
Is it a situation where a student or a parent would owe?
No, no, no.
Well, I'm, I'm not necessar- I get that we have, and I'm fine regardless, so.
Right, right, it's just, I think.
I just don't know. I, I don't wanna get in a situation where we have this and then a, a contractor or something says, oh, we owe.
No, that, that just wouldn't apply, yeah, this wouldn't apply to them, but I could, or if there's, again, there's things that I could look at to see if there's, I don't see it playing out that way, but if there's anything we need to add to, to deal with that. But I'd also say, like, I don't know that there needs to be a limit, I mean, I think you could, um, because I think that could, I think that could vary a little bit. And I, I think mainly the thing is, we, I don't see this happening very often, like, we're not gonna waive it very often. But right now, we don't even have a policy to do it and so it just sits there. And so I think there needs, and that's why that was recommended by ISBA, like, you need to have a policy for how you're gonna handle that. So, we're using, um, if you, so those of you that are new may not know this or remember it, but we have, it's called Trex. And so, it's a collection process, um, that a lot of schools use and honestly, that really does it for us. But that would be, so a lot of, what ends up happening, the, the end game for it is it would be taking the, like, out of someone's tax survey, a tax refund, like, it would come, that portion would come to us, that's how that debt would get paid. Uh, but if you file taxes or something, right, maybe that wouldn't be applicable. So, there, there's just some situations where, um, maybe that debt's just not gonna get collected.
Do you think we need to give, like, a timeframe, like, debt hasn't been collected in a hundred and eighty days? Or how long do you want it to sit on the books before you consider forgiveness?
Yeah, I mean, we can consider, I mean, it says every effort should be made by the administration to collect. Now, I think we could have some guidelines in for that, like, beyond policy and again, just remembering that policy is supposed to be broad and covered and, and not necessarily get into the weeds on stuff. But I get what you're saying, I mean, but I think we could also write guidelines that would, that would guide us on that, like, how long we're gonna wait. But the board policy itself just is saying, hey, there is a point where you can, you can waive the debt for someone. And right now, we don't even have a board policy that says we can do that.
We used to, when, back when paper checks were, and they still might be here, I don't know. But I know that at one point, we had, like, checks that were outstanding for three years and that suggested a timeline. And since, I don't think we've had that.
Yes, we do have a resolution for outstanding, I guess we do resolutions for that, um, for outstanding.
Yeah, and maybe we can pay you back off of those time stamps.
Okay.
Um, can you explain what you were talking about, about the lunch for that? Because we, we have had some, I think, some donations around Christmas time. And can you just explain how that logistically works so people understand?
Yeah, so if there's, um, you know, people that are struggling with, um, you know, providing lunch for their kids, paying for their, their lunch accounts and, you know, cause we have, the, you know, one thing we have in statute, like, we, we're obligated to feed, feed kids. Like, we have to feed them, whether they have money in their account or not. Now, what we feed them, it can be a peanut butter sandwich, it can be whatever, right? So, we're required to do that, but the, so the, but it could be that, you know, people are running up, you know, their, their lunch account and, and, you know, backing up debt into that. So, we cannot use our food service money to forgive those debts, like, we're not allowed to do that. We can't use any federal funds to do that, but we have a lot of church organizations. But we have a lot of church organizations and groups that donate money for that purpose. Now, I will say, people, our, our parents are really good. Our community's good about it. Community's good about supporting it. But we don't have a lot of that. I mean, I've seen, I've been in situations where, in schools where that's been a bigger thing than it is here. But we do have some, you know, people are running into some difficult times. But, yeah, the big point there is just that we can't use federal funds to do it. That's why we take donations for that. Alright, well, appreciate that discussion. And it's always a first reading. And honestly, we could have a second reading and a third reading if we want to. There's no, you know, urgency on these policies getting passed, so it's good discussion. The next item, I can jump to that if you're ready.
Yep, ready.
So this is just one, I just was thinking, just looking back at the, the goals that the board had written and some of the action items within there. And one of the goals, it talked about facilities, was kind of the goal area. And then it listed in there as an action, at least two tours conducted during the school year, one in the fall and one in the spring. And then reports shared with the board following each of those tours. So I didn't know, cause what we had done previously, remember, like last, we did work sessions where we toured the different schools and then kind of processed and talked about that. We don't have that organized in current board meeting dates. And so I just didn't know. Do you guys, do you, you know, based on that being kind of a goal, do you wanna do that? Do you wanna work in tours? I mean, if we're gonna do Fall '25, we're gonna need to get it pre-wed. But, yeah, I don't know. How do you feel about that?
I, I, I like the tours. I like being in the buildings. I just found to, with my work schedule, it was hard to, I mean, I made it work, but it wasn't like super easy on a Tuesday morning to be here. So I had said that if we could do on a Wednesday, but I'm like, that's just me speaking to my own abilities to be here. But no, I like, I like being in the school and kids are here. It's a different atmosphere. It's nice to, to see it.
Yeah, it is.
I like to see the administrators working. Yeah, like I just like to see you guys in your element and it's fascinating.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I found it hard to do, cause I think at least two of the ones we did, we only had three board members that could make it. So it just makes it difficult to tie it to a board meeting, right?
So it could be like a work session on an off day? I don't know. But not a meeting?
Yeah, so there's a couple ways that you could do it if you wanted to even have, like you alternating have board representatives, like during the day. And then, then we don't have to. So if it's, if it's two board members, then we wouldn't have to count it as a meeting and do a public notice and it's just the board walking through, you know? And again, it feels like, you know, and a lot of you guys being parents or whatever, you're in buildings anyway. But to come through formally as a board, then it kind of gets out of that role, right, of administrator or board member. And so that's why people kind of do it at that point. But, so maybe that, that could be a possible answer too, that it's not a formal meeting. And it's just two, and then maybe at the next board meeting, it gets reported out. These are things we looked at. And then we can be a lot more flexible when we do the tours. Do you like that idea?
I do.
Okay.
And, cause it, I think it'd be easier to switch and use our, utilize our schedules that way.
They got a lot of like, just public confusion, like the school, the meetings now and where?
Right.
How do I get there during the school day?
Well, and I can tell you, part of the discussion when we first started to do that, as it started, I'm trying to think, this happened maybe, trying to think if I was, trying to remember if it's just when I was a building principal, I know in the early two thousands it became big, that we would have board meetings at different schools, right? That became a big thing. And I get it, but the thing about it is, you just would go to a certain room in, in that school. And then you'd have like kids kind of do a dog or pony show or whatever. And then go, and you didn't really see, you still didn't see what's happening during the day. And so it just wasn't real. And then I remember when I was a principal at Goshen, in the Goshen system, they did that, the board would tour and I led them through a tour and they got, and I really enjoyed that as a principal, just to kind of show what we're doing, because they really, you don't know, no. You know, like you said, it was fun to see them in their element and what they're doing. And to see like, you know, we know we just had the largest, we had the highest increase in the highest scores for I read in over ten years. Why? Right? We can come and tell you, but wouldn't it be fun to actually see it? This is why it's happening. So. No, okay, well, yeah, we can do that. I'll, I'll try to put something together. We can talk about it in the next meeting too. Thank you. The other one then was community engagement. Goal areas, stakeholder engagement in strategic planning increases measured by an increase in attendance at board meetings, forums, public input sessions compared to twenty-four, twenty-five. So I didn't know if, cause we didn't have scheduled in there strategic planning meetings in these meetings. Do we wanna go back to that and just try to encourage? Like, we've had, like, I remember when we first started doing it, Corey, you could remember.
Yeah.
This, we had quite a few people when we first started doing it. But we also set out like several solicitations and then, you know, whatever. And then, then we did it to just kind of open it to people coming. And I don't think we had as many.
Well, and maybe, I don't know, Andrew or, or Brandy could talk to it. Like, I enjoy the strategic planning meetings, the way we do it now, not when I was first on, but the way we do it now. Because I enjoy hearing from the people that are with the students all day. But if the teachers don't find it, or and staff don't find it beneficial, then I'm okay looking at something different. I know when Tracy first got on, you had mentioned it, it can be difficult to do, because sometimes it could just be a complaint fest. But doing a town hall type meeting is what, instead of a, you know, I, I don't know how you govern that very well, but.
Right. Well, cause I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I feel like what you put together as a school board for goals and stuff, I honestly feel like that's a strategic plan. I mean, you have some action things in there. And obviously, like, I'm leading that and you're asking me to lead that. There's things that I'm gonna be accountable to the board to see that happen. I get all that. But those are also things that are happening for the school district, right? And they're not independent of what we're trying to do as a school district. So my personal opinion is I feel like we already have a strategic plan written and it's in the document that you guys presented a couple of meetings ago or the, you know, we presented a couple of meetings ago. Yeah, we talked about it actually after the meeting, going back to Mrs. Duncan and Mr. Duncan sitting there. We talked about doing that and having a town hall. Because I think the confusing thing that does happen for the public, and I know it's been a little bit contentious sometimes, but just remembering like this is a, this is a business meeting of the board, held in public, held in transparency. But it's, it's a board meeting. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a town hall meeting, right? It's a, and so there are rules and things that govern that. I'm all for it. Like, I would be fine, honestly. You might think I'm crazy, but I actually kind of like those environments. And I'd be fine to be a part of a town hall meeting and, and talk about, you know, why we do some of the things we do and what are better ways to do it. And, you know, to that point, I don't, I'm sorry, you guys know I go off on tangents. But I invited Senator Holman to come to our, our veterans breakfast at the high school today and we just talked for a little while. And again, I told him like, listen, I'm not mad with legislation or if there's rules that change, school financing and stuff. But there's just a, there's just a mechanism on how you're gonna fund stuff as a school. And if, I'm all ears, if there's a different way to do it, right, as in big sales and, right, and whatever. I mean, it's, we're limited to what we can do. But I'd love to have that exchange with people and talk about, this is the mechanism on how it's done. There's, you know, when we get really restricted on our formulas, anyway, I know I go off on tangent. But I think that's an example of something that would be a really good open discussion. I'd be happy to do, so.
And, and I don't know what you guys think, but I would definitely still want the teachers' input. So if, if we needed to have a, a, a open mic night for the public, I, I think it would be beneficial them to sit down with the teachers if that's what they want. Cause I, I want, I, like I said, I enjoy listening to them. I don't know if they enjoy going, but I enjoy it because I hear what we're voting on in action. And obviously there are boys that are kidsy every day. So I, I don't wanna lose, if we're not gonna do the, the quarterly strategic plans or planning meetings, which I agree, we have a plan. I, I don't wanna lose their input.
What we could do, and this is, so let's think about this more when we come back, what we could do is tie into these meetings, like extended meeting for open discussion. So I think one of the things, I think if we have a topic, right, that we're talking around, I think, and I just go back to, I just point to Andrew just because he referenced it the other day. And I think Tracy, you and I might have talked about this the other day at the region meeting. But how good that homeschool open forum that we had, like, we really enjoyed that. That was, again, regardless of what came out and what decision we made, the conversation that we had with families at that meeting was very beneficial, right? And so, like, for example, if that were a topic, right, and we have just open discussion on that and teachers and principals and parents and community members, everybody come in and talk about it. Like, I think, you know, deciding on some topics that we wanna have open discussion about, I think would be really good. I think that could be really helpful.
And it's an opportunity to discuss, not to craft actions and make approvals and it's just to discuss.
And, and even not even, like for us to do a formal presentation or anything like that.
Yeah.
Like, it's just, we're gonna open up this topic and let's talk. Yeah, I agree. I love it. Alright, we'll, we'll come back next meeting and maybe try to put some detail into what that could look like and see what you guys think about it. Thank you.
Now we're going on to action items.
Alright, so personal report, like you said, and this is something we can put back if you guys want to eventually into consent. I think based on some of the conversations we've had, there's always some type of big questions. You know what, maybe it's nice just to have personal report be a separate thing that you guys can build on. So as our human resource coordinator, Courtney's here to share.
Alright, so FMLA's Ty Platt teacher at the high school, Abigail Ogul, teacher at Ossian, Casey Harris teacher at Lancaster, Connie Clark bus driver in Norwell Community Schools, one request for a leave of absence, Brenna Webb, who's a teaching assistant at Ossian. We do have some resignations, Angela Dean, special education teacher, Ossian, Diana Huxhold, media center assistant, Ossian, Skip Edwards, head wrestling coach at the middle school, Mary Fogwell, substitute teacher at Norwell Community Schools, Marcy Meckler, assistant girls track coach at the high school, Darcy Bloomfield, substitute teacher in Norwell Community Schools. Lots of recommendations, Megan Hook as the new second shift custodian for Ossian. Welcoming back Sean Page as building technology for the high school. Mackenzie Tolver, eighth grade girls basketball coach, middle school, Will Geiger, eighth grade boys basketball coach, middle school, Emily Webster, art club sponsor at Ossian, Heidi Krill, assistant theater director, high school, Gregory Thornton, volunteer girls basketball coach, high school, Christine Zadalek, volunteer girls wrestling coach, high school, Anthony Moore, volunteer wrestling coach at the high school. Substitutes Kyler Morris, Kylan Evans, Michelle Glosson, Chloe Jones, Jennifer Taylor, Lauren Mann, Elizabeth Caraco and Adrian Moser. And then we have a new substitute bus driver, Billy Young. And then position change, Clint Abney. He successfully passed his CDL testing. So he's moving from a sub bus driver to a full-time bus driver position. And then Jeremy Davis is moving from an assistant wrestling coach to that head wrestling coach position at the middle school.
Alright, is that your approval?
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve.
And a second. Any discussions on this matter from the board?
Yeah, I saw another special ed teacher left and, and I know that had a lot of discussion, you know, as admin. Can you talk about, you know, thoughts on why they're leaving? And then the plan to get these jobs filled, cause I know they're difficult to fill jobs, so that the public can feel comfortable with what's going on.
You know, it's sensitive a little bit because it's, it's primarily coming from, you know, one of our buildings. So, yeah, so I will tell you that the one that's on there, and I went and met and talked with her pretty good detail. And, yeah, it's unfortunate. I think there are some things that, that I think we need to kind of work through. Again, I wanna be fair to people involved, right? And honestly, like those type of things, and I know, like in the public, this may sound like it's not transparent, but, but all of our, you know, each of our staff members have rights as staff members with us, right, and their privacy and so on. So I think, you know, as we dig a little bit more into some things that are broken down, it may be an executive session where we have that kind of discussion about some of those things. And just, I mean, that just wouldn't be a public discussion, cause that's not fair to people. That's not fair to employees and we don't treat people like that. But no, there are, there are some issues and I don't know, Anna, if there's a better way for me to say that. But I think there are some things that we need to work through. And I will say, this sometimes can happen flow. And I will say we had another, you know, I think four years ago, we had another building that was kind of struggling with some similar issues. And they're just humming now, right? It's just, that's going extremely well. And so sometimes you go through those evolves and it's unfortunate. And I, I don't want it to be a cloud on, on what we have accomplished in our special ed program, because there's a lot of really, really good things going on throughout the district and specifically in, in certain classrooms. But, but yeah, we are in a, in a building having a struggle and, but yeah, we are engaged and we are having conversation with it. And I think there is a path to rectify some of that. But it, but if it does, I think there is a point where I think sharing some things with you as a school board, specifically what we're working through, I think is appropriate. But I think that's appropriate probably in a confidential meeting.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this action item?
Do you guys still order worse Thursday?
That's not me. That's.
They got Will Geiger playing, cause that's not fair. That's all I'm saying.
I don't know.
I saw him sitting here, I'm thinking, for the other weekend.
I will say, I was at an HR conference this past Friday and one of the topics was like offboarding and all of that. And like, I think that we're here and Mike and Anna do a good job, encourage me. Like, we're really up here when you look at the conversations I have with other schools and our offboarding process, that we're actually trying to do exit interviews with our employees. Like, we're really up here when you look at school districts across the state. And I always think we're here. So, I mean, that's something to be super proud of, is that we have great processes when we're onboarding or offboarding an employee, so.
Rebecca, you had raised your hand. Okay, you'd like to come to the podium. And then just state your name, your address and, well, usually there's like a time limit, okay?
I put it all, so I can be quick. Rebecca Wilson, sixteen, twenty-three, Brook Court, Ossian, Indiana. And this is not my cup of tea. This is my mom heart struggling. But, um, I wrote it down. I just scrolled onto the top. My children, along with all the other children in the special education program at Ossian Elementary, are being severely impacted by staff leaving. Mrs. Krug, whom my children absolutely adored and did a phenomenal job, left Ossian Elementary a month or two ago and is now working for a school in Fort Wayne. I'm sure you all know her husband is on the school board for Norwell and her kids, her kids attend Northern Wells and also she lives five minutes from Norwell. There is nothing that makes sense about her going to work for a school in Fort Wayne and leaving Northern Wells. Mrs. Hulscamp, another sped education staff member who is a sped ed coach for Ossian and Lancaster. Her job description is coaching teachers and helping them strategize. She has also put in her recognition and will be leaving soon. Mrs. Wetstone, an intense teacher, has also recently left the school year. Now I've just found out my son, Owen's absolute favorite, favorite human slash teacher at Ossian Elementary, has also put in her recognition. Mrs. Dean got moved to this position last year as they needed to expand the Ossian team because the needs were so high. She has been huge and a hundred percent turning Owen's perspective around from hating and despising school to never having to complain this year. And he is personally so proud of the growth he is having. Owen has very low confidence. He's adopted through the Buster system. Mrs. Dean has been monumental in Owen's growth in all these areas. What Mrs. Dean has done for Owen, not only academically, but mentally and socially, is not something I take for granted and someone I am very saddened about losing as one of my child advocates. I'm confident Owen is going to be a mess about this and going to be severely impacted by this loss. Do you know how many kids that are just like my Owen that are being affected more than you even realize? With these horrible choices that are being made. I am a hundred percent confident these individuals, Northern Wells staff members, had no other choice. Their hands are tied and they cannot tell me why they are leaving. We just recently moved and we put a lot of thought into switching schools as it made more sense to move closer to my husband's work. And it came down to not wanting to leave Ossian Elementary because of the support system they had at Ossian. They had teachers and staff that I'm confident cared for them more than any teachers would in a different school district. They were not just here for a paycheck. They had teachers that continued to work so hard for them to have continuous growth, not only academically, but also mentally and socially. I knew I could not take this for granted and this was not something that my kids would get just at any school. Now these individuals that were pillars in my kids' lives are leaving and I really, really need to know why. I have been listening to the board meetings online and heard Superintendent Springer mention it's common for people to come and go. it's common for people to come and go. But it's not common for the people that are seeing go to go. It's not their personality. They are not the type of people out there looking for bigger and better. They are the type that feel strong about community and feel strong about Northern Wells being a family-type community. Also feel strong about building strong relationships with their students and making big impacts with where they are planted. For some reason, we have made them have to uproot themselves and take them away from what they thought would be their long-term, if not forever, place of employment. All these monumental teachers and staff to our community have left. And like I said, these people do not have the personalities to just come and go to different places of employment every couple of years. This is heartbreaking for me and has been weighing on my mind so heavy as so many have no idea how much this affects any child, let alone a child in the special needs program that has already faced severe neglect and trauma like my own. Turnover in staff like this is horrible, not only for those students today, but for their futures. I often still struggle with having lost Mr. Wilson, Mr. Parker, Mrs. Parker, and Mr. Mish, who are core members to the community. I know there are so many others I am missing. I've never stepped up personally and spoken out as I don't want to step on feet. It has gotten to the point, though, where I can no longer put my children's future at risk. I have to stand up for not only my children, but all the students in Norwell. Some questions I have are what are your plan for the special needs department?
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to say real quick, first of all, I appreciate you getting up and sharing that. And I, I share that with you and just want to, I want to elaborate necessarily on the comments and talking in general about, um, you know, teacher retention and so on. That it's, that as an overall, teacher retention, I guess what I'm saying, that it, that it's common in the profession, that, but overall, we do have pretty good retention. But I will say, like, what's happening right now at Osian is not common, right? And I would agree with you, it's a problem. To the extent that you feel like that as a parent is different than, you know, how we feel, but we're bothered by it as well, so you know. But I know it's different as a parent because you feel like you have no control over it. And to some degree, we, we don't either, but we do have obviously control over some things. And so, but I would be happy to talk with you more if you would like to some time.
All right, so we already had a motion and a second, so I'll ask for everyone in favor, raise your right hand.
Can I ask a question real quick? So, is there anything you can do to talk to, is it with the team? We did it.
Again, that'll probably be what we can discuss in an executive session, not here. So, again, if we can have, those who are in favor, raise your right hand. Right, and those not in favor, raise your right hand. Three, one. Moving on to donations.
Basically, we do have donations here. Barker Family, eighty dollars to high school FFA. Family Ford of Bluffton, two hundred thirty dollars to high school FFA. Anonymous donation of five hundred dollars to the high school girls basketball program. And Outdoor Concepts, two hundred dollars to the middle school border wars. ADX Education Systems, five hundred dollars to middle school robotics. Goodwin, Kale, and Harnish Memorial Chapel, one hundred dollars to the middle school border wars and student activities. And then Two Cube Solutions LLC, five hundred dollar donation to middle school robotics club. And then the next, oh, I guess, never mind. Go ahead, that's one.
All right, okay.
You're right.
That's okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Yeah. I'll second.
Todd, okay. So, those in, oh, any discussion? Anybody from the public wish to discuss these donations? Okay, those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. All right.
Not overnight. Around state trips, we had a high school German class to Chicago. And that is, the date says on here twelve five, but they had a conflict with the charter bus. So, it's actually going to be twelve eight, so December eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, with the date change, I make a motion to approve.
Oh, can I get a second with the date change?
Yes, again.
Any discussion?
Do they need chaperones?
Yeah, can I go?
My wife's on that one.
Um, anybody from the public want to discuss this? Okay, those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, four-four. No, six-four.
All right, so the last one is the administration building. So, this conversation started a long time ago, even before, I think, Corey, when we first started the conversation, maybe the one on the board, I think. I don't think you were on yet. But we do have a proposal, an offer for the, for the purchase of the administration building. It's for two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty-five thousand, sorry. And that is as is, so that's no inspections. And so, we need approval on the purchase agreement. Pending approval, we'd have a closing date, I think, of November eighteenth.
And, sorry, well, I, I'll make a motion to approve and then I'll talk.
Can I get a motion to approve?
You have the second.
Corey made a motion. Kathy can't.
Okay.
Okay, so now, any comments?
The, um, the admin building that we're selling needed quite a bit of money to put into it. And then we, through that middle school project, worked on getting your new area redone. So, this is a net positive spend. So, people can understand and, you know, because we hear a lot about spending. This is a net positive in what it costs to build that out and what if we're selling this for.
Yeah, for what we're, what we're sitting in right now, central offices will be two hundred thousand dollar profit to the school district.
Mike, that was a good idea. I just want to mention that. I mean, you took us up there and showed us the idea. That was a good idea.
Yeah.
It really was.
And who's buying it by chance?
Wayne, you know, the group?
Yeah.
Just curious.
It's JMLL that's on the purchase agreement.
I saw that, but I, I don't recognize that.
JMLL is.
I saw that. I was like, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, anybody from the public wish to make any comment on this? Okay, saying none, can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, you already got it.
Oh. So, can we, those in favor, raise your right hand. Kathy is not voting because of things and those against it, same sign, none, okay.
Things also none is her current.
Yes. Yep, okay. I think that's it. Any, any public, oh, Rebecca, you, you're, you're good, right? With talking, you're good?
Yeah, I just had two questions.
I'll let you.
Okay.
If you want to, it's fine.
It's up to you if you want to come back up or if you want to talk to Mike after or however.
I can talk to you afterwards if you want.
Okay, I just liked the idea that Mr. Krug mentioned about exit interviews. I thought that would be really helpful. And then I didn't know if it was a possibility to see people's resignation letters as like a community member. I, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's time to get more reasoning.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Jam, did you have anything to say? No, Rick?
Okay.
Nope, okay. Real quick, hang tight, I've just, it's Veterans Day. And I'd like to first thank everybody and Todd, appreciate you. I learned a whole new level of appreciation. I think having a son changed that. Happy Veterans Day. And I make a motion to adjourn if I can.
Yeah, you can. You're good.